The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular City Council meeting of August 14, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez. Councilmember Arias. Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. In keeping with Council's resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call in the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray on the counter next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully. If public statements become disruptive, then I clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting. You will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts a meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received one public speaker card for items not listed on today's agenda. The first public speaker is Walter Keenan.
Thank you. And for the record, Vice Mayor entered at 3:32. Welcome, Mr. Keenan.
Thank you. Just in history, I spoke originally spoke at the City Council meeting on July 10 about a property in my neighborhood operating as an Airbnb full-time, which in essence is an illegal hotel-type operation. I returned on the 7:24 meeting to comment on the action needed by the council in this matter. At that meeting, Vice Mayor Gonzalez and Councilmember Freeman assertively voiced their support that existing laws, including this one, should be enforced, which at that point it wasn't. At this point, I believe it was the mayor who then asked the city manager if he had any questions. Mr. Clegg said, "No, he understood the direction from the council." Subsequently to that meeting, I reached out to various individuals in the city departments and was ultimately referred to Mr. David Paquette, who was the code enforcement manager. Mr. Paquette has been very responsive and has actively looking at ways to assist me and my neighborhood in this matter. I only returned today to this meeting to express my appreciation for the role any and all of you have had in raising this concern to the level where some action is being taken. So very honestly, I thank you very much. Thank you both you gentlemen for voicing your support at that meeting. And Mr. Clegg, thank you for the follow-through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan.
For the first time, I'm under time.
Very good. Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers who are not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, that was our final speaker.
Okay, thank you. And now, Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on this afternoon's agenda?
Mayor Go, we have one speaker card for item 3A. Did you want to take those comments after staff's presentation?
Yes, we will. And now, next item, please.
Reports item 3A, Community Choice Ag.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Assistant City Manager Gary Helen will provide a brief introduction to this topic, and then our partners that have prepared this report will share the report with you.
Great. Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Gary Helen, Assistant City Manager. We previously had a presentation before this council a year ago on a very high-level overview of what a CCA is. We had a presentation from Mr. Woody Hastings on, you know, 50,000-foot level of what are CCAs. We got your direction to move forward and investigate these further. So we have hired Andrew Belknap with Baker Tilly to give us that assessment of what he's done in regards to CCA, really looking at, does this make sense for Bakersfield? How does it make sense? Also, we got some direction from this council on what other cities do. You know, who's doing this successfully? How are they doing it? We did some deeper dive into what CCAs are, and I think I want to just share three or four kind of major takeaways from a high-level perspective. Some of the discussion at the last council meeting was, is this really going to be a rate savings for our residents? And primarily when cities look at this, it's not typically for saving customers, you know, 25% or a very large percentage. There is nominal percentage reduction on bills historically for CCAs. Primarily, the goal is to have local control and to be able to make decisions at a council level on energy and specifically this effort. Also, entities do this for economic development purposes. Typically, CCAs ultimately have programs to incentivize economic development and to bring those programs to the local businesses, to residents, also to do some business attraction for larger developments. So that's typical from other entities. And I think the largest thing, and this is where I want to end, and then I'll have Mr. Belknap take over the presentation based on his assessment, it really gives us a lever point we've not ever had. I don't want to say anything bad about our partners at PG&E. They are good partners. In fact, they're here today. I invited them to come and listen to the presentation. But what this does is it gives us a tool in our tool belt to be able to have a place to move development potentially faster. One of the highest goals of this council is to be more business-friendly. So with the CCA, we have that tool to be able to sit at the table with a PG&E and be able to say, we now have a CCA. We have a lever point that we've not had before to utilize on moving projects faster, to help generate additional power to where it can't be generated, and to use that as a strategic advantage for us and Bakersfield to kind of lead out in this effort. So with that, I'll turn portion of this presentation over to Mr. Belknap.
Thank you, Gary. Madam Mayor and members of the council, I'm Andy Belknap with Baker Tilly. And I'll go through this PowerPoint and then answer any questions that you might have. So we did conduct a survey-level assessment of a community choice aggregation program, CCA for electrical service in Bakersfield, and what that might mean for the city. So we're going to go over what the CCA landscape looks like in California and how CCAs have a relationship with investor-owned utilities, how they're formed and function, rates, and how rates typically compare with investor-owned utilities, the potential benefits of a CCA, the risks and uncertainties that are associated with CCAs, and then the Bakersfield setting, and the pros and cons here in Bakersfield, and possible next steps. So although the law that allowed for CCAs was actually passed in California way back in 2004, it took a while for the first CCA to be formed, and that came about in 2010. But since then, they've been on kind of a roll. And now, about 27% of the state's population is actually served in terms of electrical generation by a CCA. There's 183 cities and 18 counties now that are part of a CCA, and there are 26 CCAs that are active in California. And they actually procure about 28% of the electrical load that is served via the three big investor-owned utilities, which are PG&E, Southern California Edison, and San Diego Gas and Electric. Customers are initially subscribed into a new CCA after it's approved by the California Public Utilities Commission, but it's important to recognize that they can opt out and go back to the investor-owned utility if they want to. This slide shows a map of the territory, areas of the existing CCAs in California. This is courtesy of an organization called the CalCCA, which is an association of the existing CCAs in the state. And the green are the operational CCA, and the gray are those that are considering formation of a CCA. And then the orange is an area where they filed their implementation plan. It's being considered by the California CPUC. So in terms of how a CCA is formed and function, local governments, such as the city of Bakersfield, are authorized under state law to create an implementation plan. And I will show you what is contained in the implementation plan in a minute or so, and then file that with the California Public Utilities Commission. And then the California Public Utilities Commission holds hearings and will approve that with possible amendments after they review it. This implementation plan is essentially a business plan of how the CCA will function. It lays out things like the organizational structure of the new CCA. It's typically set up as either a department of the local government, which is forming the CCA, or it's often done as part of a joint powers authority. There are several joint powers authority within the state that operate CCAs. And then in terms of how the CCAs function, they exist solely to procure wholesale electricity. And they often emphasize procurement of renewable energy. They don't have to do that, but that's often a mission that they have. And then sell it to retail customers. The investor-owned utilities continue to be responsible for the distribution and transmission and metering of the electricity. So the customers, as I mentioned, are initially transferred to the CCA, but they can opt out. As I mentioned, the IOUs continue to operate transmission and distribution. So how does the local government work within the context of a CCA? One of the most important roles that local government has is rate setting. And so that would be a role that the city of Bakersfield would take on. As Gary mentioned, there typically is a small rate setting. If you look at the CCAs across the state, it's typically between 3% and 9%. It's not huge, but there's typically some rate savings. There are also various local economic development opportunities. The CCAs can often be perhaps a little bit more nimble, and they can work with your city economic development organization to work with business and industry when it comes to generating electricity as part of a project. One of the things that a lot of CCAs point to is they strive for long-term rate stability for residents and businesses, exercising through the local control of the city council. They often point also to the benefits from renewable energy options that they provide to local residents, which again, is not a must-do, it's an option. They often offer a menu of choices so that local customers can choose from different types of energy, 100% green energy or some other choices. I mentioned rate savings. One of the CCAs, they have an incentive to deliver some rate savings because they want to keep the customers within the CCA. They don't want to give them an incentive to opt out. They want to try to keep them within the CCA. In Bakersfield, Bakersfield would be a large CCA. There's a lot of electrical load here. The other thing about Bakersfield is it's a very fertile environment for power generation, particularly from solar. I'm sure you already know this. It's an excellent location for solar projects, one of the best in the United States. And you have a number of projects that are already underway. And the close working relationship between a CCA and the city in terms of electrical power generation might be a nice economic development element. And there's just a number of projects here that are already underway that would be nice to add, and that power would go directly to the CCA and then be made available to And these are some of the future projects that the city is already working on. And many of the, another nice synergy between the city and the CCA is a number of these projects have been awarded some grant funding that the city has been able to procure. So that's another way to help, I guess, underwrite the cost of generating the electricity. The CCA can directly procure the energy that comes from these projects. So in wrapping it up here, some of the pros and cons when looking at this from Bakersfield's perspective. One of the pros would include local control. You'd have greater local control over electrical generation. And say, when it comes to rate setting, there would be some potential for economic development benefits. There would be some potential for energy generation potential, particularly, especially solar. Potential for rate savings. There'd be an opportunity to set up some local energy efficiency programs, and more leverage on local energy issues, or closer working relationship between the city and the CCA when it comes to energy generation projects. Now, there's also some uncertainty and some cons. The complexity of a CCA shouldn't be understated. The implementation plan is going to run over 100 pages. It's going to be pretty complicated. It's going to be another complicated role for the city council to undertake. The rate setting is a complicated undertaking. There is regulatory uncertainty. There's some differences of opinion, as you can imagine, between the investor-owned utilities and the CalPUC and the collection of CCAs that exist in the state. So there's pushing and pulling, and therefore some regulatory uncertainty. And there's also, this is an additional business the city would be taking on. I know you already have a lot on your plate, and this would be adding to that. And there have been a couple of CCA failures in the state where they've had to wind down their operations. But I would hasten to add that there's, to my knowledge, there's only been two, and they have both been small, arguably under efficient scale CCAs. But there have been instances of failure, and that needs to be taken into account. The next steps for Bakersfield, should you choose to move ahead, would be to develop an implementation plan pursuant to the CPUC regulations and state law. We would broadly estimate those costs as being between $75,000 and $200,000. We've had some initial discussions about doing this, and actually, we think that the cost may be closer to the lower end. There's some peculiarity in terms of scheduling, how the CPUC looks at these implementation plans. So an implementation plan has got to be submitted by January 1st, the year prior to a CCA becoming operational. So if you want to be operational in 2026, you need to file the implementation plan by January 1st of 2025. If you wanted to do it in 2027, then you have a little bit more time. And this just steps you through, I'm sorry, it's kind of a little bit small, but this steps you through what those state law requirements are and the implementation plan section that would speak to that legal requirement. And luckily, we don't have to create the wheel here. There's plenty of implementation plans that we can go look at. But they are fairly complicated, particularly when you look at the rate-setting component and the procurement process component. They get into a fair amount of detail about, you know, how you're going to do this. Generally speaking, when it comes to procurement of electricity, that's highly specialized. Most of the CCAs will use vendors or consultants to actually do the procurement work. It's highly technical work. But the implementation plan will go into that in detail. And these are the things that have to be covered. It probably will take, it would take some specialized consultants to help you write the implementation plan, or take six to eight weeks to get it done. It's, like I said, about a 100-page piece of work when it's all done. But luckily, it's all been done before, and there's plenty that can be looked at. So I'd like to open it up for any questions or comments, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Belknap. City Manager Clegg, any comments before we go to the public?
Mayor, we've had a couple of good summarizations. I would just reiterate for council that we have some options in timing. This is something that we obviously can move forward in the near term, if we're trying to meet certain deadlines, but also would reflect that when we look at the city council goals and our work plan, this is relevant to one of our objective statements about trying to create more energy independence and trying to create more energy production related to that, and some of our economic development goals. But I do see this as a longer-term strategy that could pay important dividends, and that it's important to lay the groundwork and the foundation for those strategies. But I wouldn't, if you were to ask, you know, if this was an urgent issue, I think that the answer is no. But we do feel like continuing to set this foundation in place and put in motion for these long-term plans, that there's benefits there to be leveraged. In particular, as noted, our own production of our own solar facilities. We think that we're going to increase the amount of solar and other energy production that we're going to pursue as a city, and we get to capture all those benefits if it comes into our own CCA. But from a timing standpoint, I think we have some options. And so we did lay that out, that we can move forward quickly, but we can also take this into this next coming year. I would also share that there's not just one way to do this. We explored some options, and we're prepared to speak to those through some of the questions and discussion, and that the city can form its own aggregator. We could join other aggregators. We could also, again, over time, be able to look at how some of the regulatory uncertainties unfold and pursue CCA into the future as well. But again, this was in response to council referrals specific to the topic, but also it's related to some aspects of our goals and long-term plans.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. We'll go to the public now before coming back to council. Madam City Clerk, would you please call the public speaker?
Michael, turnip seed.
Madam City Clerk, for the record, Councilmember Cor entered at 3:41.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Michael Turnipseed. I represent the Kern County Taxpayers Association. I did a little research on this issue today, and I summarized it on the paper so you could read it, the challenges that actually face CCAs. My numbers are a little different than the gentleman presented. When I asked how many have failed or aren't in operation, it's actually started, the number is seven, which included the Western Community Energy, City of Santa Paula, City of Hanford, City of Commerce, Buick Clean Energy, City of Monta Beto, and Baldwin Park. And there are four additional ones that have been organized but never gotten off the ground, including the King's Resource District here. I don't know if that's the City of Hanford or not, but it's been by the King's Resource District. So if you take those 11 and add them to the 19 that are running today, that's like a 35% didn't work. That's a pretty high percentage. This is a very complicated game, let alone the fact that you have a franchise agreement. It was done in 2010, I think. In exchange for a utility tax negotiated with PG&E of 1%, I think they have an evergreen contract. Is that correct, Madam Attorney? Yes, it's evergreen. So it's not a 50-year franchise agreement. Bakersfield gave it away forever. So I'm sure there's legal ramifications here. I haven't been around long enough to see these things. So the question is, it might be litigation because you'd be breaking your franchise agreement. And the fact is, you think you're going to have better delivery of services? PG&E is still going to be regulated on the transmission and delivery side. If the PUC doesn't authorize them to put more wires and transformers and all the things they have to do to move electricity, it's not going to happen anyway. And my clock's down to five seconds, so I'll say thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Madam Clerk, any other public speakers on this topic?
Mayor Go, that was our only speaker card received.
Thank you. And now, Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for Mr. Turnipseed. Your first section is very thoughtful. I wrote down a lot of the same questions. All of us would like to have more local control, and it sounds great, and I'm all for that, if we can figure out how to do it. But what I didn't hear, which I think is what the public wants to hear, is that their rates would go down versus what PG&E would do. Not in absolute dollars go down, but PG&E just sent us a few months ago 6.5% increase. And every year, they do it because they were forced by legislation to buy inefficient green energy. energy until they filed bankruptcy. And then they were going to file bankruptcy a second time, three years later, until recently they said, we'll cut down the repurchase of the solar power by about 50%. That happened on April 13th. My neighbor told me about it, said if you're going to get solar, you have to get it before April 15th. So I did. And I said, well, you're, the state is driving the citizens, driving the rate increase at legislative level, it's not PG&E. And I feel kind of guilty getting it because, you know, it's about a five-and-a-half-year payback, which is absurd. But, and then within, what is it, six months since April 16th? Sun Solar, the biggest one in the country, that did install mine, just declared bankruptcy last week, okay? 80% of the solarists stopped immediately when they quit the ridiculous purchase of my energy at three times what it's worth, okay? What you could buy natural gas for, okay? So we've been penalizing the citizens and especially the poor citizens with massive increases to subsidize the people who could afford solar. The game's kind of over with Sun Solar declaring bankruptcy and I guess the laws start to fall now because it was such a sweetheart deal, people were doing it. This really addresses procurement of energy, that's, and the distribution stays the same. I was a little worried before the speaker finished that, well, what happens to all the tracts when we got electrifying with new housing tracks? And I guess that stays in PG&E's hands, I'm assuming, from what was explained. They're not doing a very good job and we wish we had leverage over it because it's very frustrating when everything's done in a tract or a new industrial project and it cannot move forward, it stops. Because PG&E says, we don't have time to get to it and we have no choices. So, I would like some choices, but this is simply on the procurement of the energy source. So, I'm not blaming this, it doesn't solve most of our problems with PG&E. The other thing that PG&E is being forced to do, but I guess they're backing off, that it said, well, let's have a, somewhat, you can have a bias toward renewable energy because of where you look at it. Well, I just want the energy to be, when you bid, the lowest price supplier. I don't want to overpay and then charge our citizens, which are not a wealthy group of citizens, more and more for the utilities bill. So my, if we were to move forward with this, I want a policy, you go for the lowest-priced source of energy, I don't care whether it's solar or natural gas or bio or whatever it is. And maybe in this region, you have a chance for some sweetheart deals from those providers because there's a lot of major installations. That might be an advantage to us of doing this, but it is a huge undertaking and I just wish, I know my neighbor's going to say, well, are my rates going to go down? And when I say, probably not, they're going to say, well, why are you doing it? And I said, for local control. And they said, well, what are you getting out of local control? And I don't have a good answer. That may be because I don't understand this well enough. I'm not saying abandon this tonight at all, trying to keep an open mind. I'm just saying it's a big hill to climb over. And I do expect retaliation from PG&E. I mean, they're going to find ways to hurt you. You could ask some of the other cities, though. And I guess that's, I guess that's most of my comments. If we did move forward or decide to move further forward, I would really want to have extensive public hearings so that people from the community, and there are some knowledgeable, you know, energy people in our community, I mean, with PhDs, who would come and tell us, you learn a lot in public hearings when the right people come, not someone like me just saying, I want my rates lower, but someone who's an expert in the field. And public hearings can really surface, can educate us because I don't feel educated yet, I haven't educated myself. And so, I think we keep an open mind, but I think we be slow and careful about this and really vet it, you know, before we, before we were going to make any sort of final decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Well, I would agree with your comments. Councilmember Freeman, I appreciate that. And Mr. Turnipseed too, for bringing another perspective to the table today. This is not something that I am versed on by any means, but I do have a couple of questions and I do want to ask them. Of what percentage of the community, if we were to move forward with this, what percentage of the community is actually going to benefit from all this hard work that's going to be done? And so, that's my first question, I have some others.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Gray. Taking aside the question about, you know, what is the sort of degree of benefit of savings, if you're just saying what percentage of the population?
Right.
That would be the entire, you know, populace of the city of Bakersfield. You could actually create, I guess distinctive boundaries, but as, you know, we've envisioned it, it would be for our entire populace.
Okay.
That's what we see in other communities, you have a citywide CCA and they're automatically opted in and then if, if people want to opt out, they can, but it would be offered to the entire city.
So they wouldn't have to agree, they would, they would automatically be, I would automatically be part of the CCNA whether I wanted it or not and then I'd have to opt out. Instead of opting in, you have to opt out.
Right.
Okay, I've never liked opt-out in anything. When my kids were in school and they said, this is a program, they're going to begin it automatically unless you send a note to say they're not going to be, that didn't register well with me as a parent. So I see that happening, that could cause a lot of issues right there. The other thing that really worried me in this is when I saw that we would have to establish a department, another department in our city government to be able to do this.
That actually would be a choice. There's a number of organizational arrangements that you could pursue. I think I mentioned there are a number of joint powers authorities in the state that you could affiliate with. That would be another way to do it.
If I, if I may follow up on that, though, I think one of the concerns, Councilmember, is, well, two in my mind, is just, you know, how do we fund that additional operation? As well as, you know, if it were, for example, a city department, that just, you know, additional, you know, long-term overhead for the city.
Right.
Like other utilities, I wouldn't recommend pursuing an aggregator like this unless it was treated like an enterprise where the revenues, they're going to be generated with the purchase and sale of power can support the costs of that operation. And so, it would be essentially, it would be rate-supported. We wouldn't have to pull from the general fund, we wouldn't have to pull from other funding sources for the city for this operation. Otherwise, I wouldn't recommend it to the council. I do think it's fair to state that if it were a department versus, let's say, a joint powers authority, that there is some level of administrative, also just, you know, responsibility, even if it's self-funding, there's a certain amount of, you know, council time on setting those rates annually and city staff time on, you know, putting those on agendas. But for the most part, it's an independent, either joint powers authority or a department that would be run like an enterprise that wouldn't have additional city costs to it.
Okay. So, thinking about it in those terms, then what percentage of the city would have to stay in it in order to cover the overhead? And that's where, that's where the tricky part is in here, where the failure could come. Because all of a sudden, you need 75% to participate and now you only have 50%.
Yeah, we haven't, we don't have those numbers today, the next phase of the additional, like deeper fiscal analysis that was referenced, it could be somewhere between 75 and $200,000 would answer that question.
That's where I have a hard time because I think that, I'm kind of with our Councilmember Freeman here, that I don't feel like we have enough information to really make an educated decision. So with that 75 to $200,000 investment, we're gambling our taxpayers' money to be able to come up with that information. It seems like there's, would be a better way to do that than make that investment. So I, I don't feel like we're ready to really be able to come to a decision tonight that you're asking us for when we're just kind of throwing out a couple hundred thousand dollars on the table and say, let's figure it out from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Smith.
I really, I mean, the vision that I had and the recommendation, and I've spoke with the consultant and I've spoke with the city manager's office multiple times, the real vision for this is not what was presented. What was presented is buy wholesale, sell retail, which is what most of them do. But the city of Bakersfield has a very unique opportunity in that we own thousands of acres of land, the sewer treatment plants and the recharge, that could have multiple uses and those uses potentially could be solar fields. And that's enough solar fields to provide the energy for the entire community, in my rough estimation and research. So that the savings is not a 5% or 9%, but if the, if your total bill is 30 or 40% energy, then the city's in control of that 30 or 40% and the solar fields have a payback of 15 to 20 years. Then that, according to the consultant we heard the first time, is $125 million, I'm sure it's higher now, a year that instead of going out of the community is reinvested back into the community. It's a big, big economic development, local control concept. But I really didn't hear anything from the report that addressed that idea. So I guess, my feeling at this point is, yes, we're not ready to go forward with application, but I do want to keep an open mind and long-term opportunity for Bakersfield to produce its own energy.
If I may, Councilmember Smith, I appreciate the opportunity. Let me also highlight one technical aspect and then speak to your points. If we were to create large solar production in the city today, we're required to essentially pump that straight into the existing grid, an existing investor-owned utility. And it's subject to those rates that we have to negotiate through those entities. We can't necessarily take solar energy or other energy that we may produce and sort of, you know, receive all the benefit of that off the top as the city. It has to go through a utility that is managed by the Public Utilities Commission.
But we have a CCA, we can buy it from ourselves.
Correct. That's where I was headed, is that if we have our own CCA, then it can go through the city. And so, in acknowledgement of, Councilmember Smith, that is accurate. Not necessarily, the biggest wins, we don't assume, are just buying and selling of power. It's actually creating a CCA that would allow us to receive and process our own energy without it necessarily, you know, going through other, you know, providers first. And so, we've looked and we noted, you know, in the presentation, several of the energy-producing projects, but, you know, failed to draw that connection that the benefit of those projects will be much higher if we have our own CCA.
Well, those are small.
Correct.
What we're talking about, I mean, that's parking lots.
But even, even those will have benefits, we think, that are notable. But again, you know, we don't, we don't necessarily realize the full impact of the benefits for these different, you know, projects, let alone larger projects as we start to look at our, our other acreage that the city can do these large projects on. And so, I think the, the application process is somewhat similar, but we're not necessarily obligated to, you know, do all of the purchase and sell of wholesale. Even if we form a CCA, we're not obligated to then, you know, you know, do all of that purchase and sale. And so there are some different options, but we, you know, we do need to do further analysis on how we would set that up. And that's part of, sort of, in the next phase. So appreciate that, that clarification, that there's not just one path forward, we can use a CCA for different benefits.
Well, I also am not in favor of moving forward if it's just a wholesale-retail situation. I don't think there's any, there's enough benefit to the city, so, but the opportunities are much, much larger if we are a substantial power provider. And so that's the analysis that I would recommend we move forward on. And I don't know if that's part of the application or you do that completely separately, but you know, what, what are the real opportunities for us being a CCA and providing, you know, thousands of acres essentially of solar power?
Well, I think, I think that that's a very specific question that would require some specific sort of engineering analysis that would be best examined in the, the next step, the implementation plan. Because there is a section of that that deals with power generation opportunities. And I did want to go back to the question of benefits and try to give you some specifics on the rates. We did examine eight, we did compare rates in eight specific examples within the state of California between CCAs and the investor-owned utilities to try to drill down and get some specifics on the rate benefits that might happen. What we found is that in seven of those eight comparisons, the CCA had a rate advantage, in other words, had lower rates than the investor-owned utility. And these were random comparisons. In one, the rates were the same. The average savings was 5% for the CCA. They ranged from 1% to 16%. So I just wanted to give you that, that data.
I get that, and that's just buying wholesale, selling retail.
Yeah, it is. It's, you, you, you put it very well. It's the wholesale-retail.
Yeah, and I, I would agree with the other councilmembers that that, by and of itself, is not enough. But I think our opportunities are so much larger than that.
I think that's a point well-taken. I think it's just that a deeper engineering analysis is necessary to understand the generation opportunities here in Bakersfield, but there are some very meaningful generation opportunities here, especially solar.
Right. I mean, it's economic development, it's jobs, it's saving customers' money, it's, it's a lot of things down the road. If it works, and I, you know, at this point, you know, my, my research says that, yes, we own enough acreages, we could provide energy for the whole community.
Indeed, the implementation plan would answer, to a much greater extent, those questions. And our research to date indicates that the cost will be much closer to 75,000 than a 200,000.
Councilmember Smith, anything else?
If I could just add one, yeah, one, one piece to that. Currently, and this is kind of a dual track that we're going down, our Public Works Department is, is doing an RFP for what we're calling an ADC process, which is assess, design, construct on alternative energy projects that would specifically reduce our costs on larger energy-consuming, you know, areas of the city. So, but I think during that assessment, so the A part of that ADC process, will flush out some of these potential projects. out some of these potential projects that could come, whether the CCA is there or not, because we were, we've been considering, you know, this ADC process for quite some time.
Right, but for, in order for the consumers citywide to have an opportunity, then we need the CCA, right?
That is correct.
Mayor, I, you know, Mr. Turnipseed's, you know, waving his hand, may, may we recognize him.
Mr. Turnipseed.
Madam Mayor, thank you for recognizing me. Thank you. Every day, millions of kilowatts are sold by the state of California in ISO to Arizona for one cent a kilowatt because we have too much solar and it can't be used when it's produced and there's not enough storage. And to go out and invest in solar now, and I would think the smartest guy in town is Jess Frederick. You should have him do your presentation. He's been in this. And he told me a story that 20 years ago, he brought a proposal forward to the city to contract with local energy plants, gas plants. There were plants that were being sold, going down, and they could have bought plants for nothing. No, that's about the time when the whole PG&E and the utility tax thing came. And I don't, I know peripherally what happened, but the, the city manager at the time didn't want anything to do with it. But there were golden opportunities that were missed 20 years ago. And one thing about Jess, when he comes and talks, and I think you all know him, he's as straightforward and straight shooter as it is. He knows everything. He's, if he's not the smartest guy in energy in town, he's number two. Maybe his boss Mary Jane is, I don't know. But I would recommend that you ask Jess Frederick to come make a presentation on the whole electrical system today as it is in California. Thanks again for allowing me to talk again.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, I just, to move along, I guess, I, I would make a motion to continue to analyze. And I, I guess the analyzing takes place during this next step of the implementation plan, or perhaps it's different. Mr. Clegg?
Yeah, I'll allow Gary to jump in after I give my best shot, which is, yes, the implementation phase does conduct that analysis. However, again, there's multiple components, as you saw that one slide, that had lots of lines and rows, that there's multiple steps to the implementation phase. I, I'm hearing clear feedback from the council today that the primary interest is not in becoming a large, you know, purchaser of wholesale electric energy. And so what we'll do as a first step is that we're, we'll, we'll do some analysis in consultation with Baker Tilly and staff about our ability to create a more narrow implementation process that would have a more narrow analysis function that, you know, isn't trying to answer everything around this, because I think that, that changes the time and the cost and the scope. But if we can create an implementation phase that, you know, has that additional analysis, but it's more focused and targeted to this piece that we're talking about, I'll confirm that with council before we move forward.
I appreciate that. And it, you know, I understand that, to me, it's the long-term goal. Maybe you start out and you have to wholesale retail for a while, but long-term, our real goal is to be the energy provider, in my mind.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ware.
Thank you, Mayor. Feel like I've been here before. And last time we were here because we thought we could make some money, and that never did turn out. And so it kind of just disappeared for a while, which was peacefully. But could we look on, on page five? Because page five, if I'm reading this right, tells a pretty good story, because the coastal areas seem to be using this. The non-coastal areas are not.
That is correct. Of who's, who has an implemented operating CCA, that, that's the green, those green highlighted areas, those that are considering or in that implementation plan is the yellow. And then...
But the vast majority is already got something in place.
That's correct.
If it's on this side of the mountains. On this side of the mountains, we're, we're stuck. We don't really have anything. So that, that tells me maybe we're 10 years, five years behind where we need to do before we start popping out experts to start monitoring or do whatever they need to do. I think staff probably has some time that's going to have to be invested in this, because I don't want to spend a lot of money just poking around, seeing what, what it is and where it falls. I'd like to get to a point where we have a good idea of where it's at and where our, where our price is at and, and what will actually happen, then just start out with throwing 250,000 or however much money that, that we're, that we end up spending. It, it just doesn't make any sense to me. Okay, that's fine. That, that reaction is fine. I absolutely understand that reaction, because it, it just, I mean, I mean, what are we doing? We're talking about local, you know, the Bakersfield city. I, I personally don't want canopy solar paneling the skyline of Bakersfield. We could have more generation, I'm sure of that, but let's, let's talk about pros and cons. Local control. Do we really have local control? I mean, do we really have local control?
Well, one of the responsibilities, if a CCA is established, is for this council to set rates. So that, that's, that's a lot of control, in, in my mind. And to, to cast the, the vision of what, what is the emphasis of the CCA, as Councilmember Smith said, it could be focused on power generation, you know, that, that could be the emphasis, or it could be, you know, looking for the lowest price to offer to residents so that there's more than a 5% savings, maybe there's a greater savings. So if that's the, if that's the vision of the council, for us to look down each of those paths during this process. And I, I was just going to add to Clarence, uh, Christian's comment of, there's lots of off-ramps that we could take if, if, as we go down this road of deeper investigation. We could always pull back and, and say, we want to take an off-ramp at this point, because this investigation has led us to this conclusion, and we can come back to the council a number of different times, so.
But those points, those off-points, I mean, they cost money. Absolutely cost money. I, I don't believe that we, as a city, are ready to spend money like that. I think we have a lot of exploring to do, and I think we're just not ready for it. But when we are, we should be ready to mobilize pretty quickly if we've really done our homework.
If I may, Councilmember, I think if I could summarize a key point that you shared is that there's the ability for staff to do, you know, some of this analysis and research independent of spending contract dollars to go and get that research done. And so again, I, I would offer that, you know, in coming months, what we will do is, what we can do, I would offer up, is for staff to, again, assess what are some next steps that could, could be done, analysis in-house? What are, what are options for doing analysis with some contract support, but in a narrowed scope, and then come back to council and share what that dollar amount is, of what we can do in-house, what we would, you know, what would the cost be if we did another step outside? And that speaks to your point of, you know, saving some of those dollars, doing some of that homework first as staff. And I think part of that process could be identifying what, what would be a potential next step in cost, but first do our homework in-house.
I appreciate that. And if you could have a goal that at least partial, even partial, of a non, a non-waterfront, if we could at least show a partial entry into solar, like the, the outlet, like the, the boundary, the ocean. I mean, we need to have something that says, okay, we think we're ready to move out into this area, because we're going to have to know how to do that. And I think we need to get ourselves prepared to the point where we can start small and see how we can do shading the eastern part of, of, of California. Does that make any sense?
It is. I think the, the comparison to coastal, to Central Valley is understood. There's a distinct comparison there. I think also what does, what does solar generation, solar canopies look like in the Central Valley by comparison? As well as I, I heard as well, that, you know, we will want to be thoughtful about where we would do a lot of this generation. You're not going to necessarily have these solar fields next to, you know, certain other uses, but we should be thoughtful about where solar would go. And I agree, but part of our approach is, we do think we can start smaller and grow. One of the challenges, though, is until you at least have the formation, you can't even start small. But we, we will put some more details to what a phased small start can look like, as well as a narrower scope and, you know, what an implementation plan could look like.
And maybe we could get a new report in maybe 90 days or something like that, just to see the progress.
I would say roughly 90 days, yes, plus or minus.
I'm not setting that as a date, but, you know, in four, four months or something, we could get that and, and then maybe be able to actually make some intelligent decisions about where do we go next. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ware. Councilmember Freeman.
Well, I'd like to wrap this up, so I would like to make a motion to direct staff to continue exploring the CCA, the ADC, per the comments of both Councilman Smith and Councilman Ware. Thank you.
And now, Councilmember Gonzalez, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to make a few comments before we get to the question, if I can, Councilmember Freeman. To quote a former Secretary of Defense, "There are known knowns, there are known unknowns, and there are unknown unknowns." And I feel like we don't know quite enough with this particular matter. So I, I certainly support the recommendation that we continue to explore, because there is, there could potentially be an opportunity, we just don't know of it. I think in the motion, I would, would ask that we really get clear on what our goal is as a council and as a city as we proceed forward. We've, we've talked about local control. I really think that, listening to my colleagues and from my own perspective, the real priority here is how we can reduce the cost of utility. And, and we need to have a clear-eyed strategy, a plan, to, to, to do that, either through a CCA or not. And that's my second referral, in that we look at other ways that we can reach the goals that we are seeking, and to reduce utility costs. I appreciate Councilmember Smith and what his, what he's trying to accomplish. And I think we all should be thinking creatively, ways in which we can reduce utility costs for our constituents in particular, given the reality that costs continue to escalate and it's very expensive, and especially as we see hotter and hotter summers. But there might be other alternatives for us to get to that same goal. And I, I don't want us to singularly lock ourselves into this CCA model. Perhaps there are other options up there. So my third request is that we take Councilmember, or excuse me, Mr. Turnipseed's recommendation, and we bring in local experts like Mr. Frederick, so that we can hear from them as well and understand their perspective and help, invite them to think with us on different questions as it relates to solar, for example. I mean, we, we have an issue that's well-understood by lots of folks in the profession related to the duck curve. And how do you, how do you address that challenge when, you know, there's an excess supply of energy and the demand is low? And, and vice versa, you know, in, in the evening times. And so we ought to, I, I want us to continue to look at all of these options on the table and sort of broaden our thinking a little bit more, so that we can ultimately get to that goal of cost savings. Thank you.
Councilmember Gray.
Before we vote, I want to, I'm going to withdraw my other questions I was going to ask, but I do want to understand the motion in entirety before we vote, because there's been a lot going on up here.
Okay. So, Councilmember Smith made a motion, Councilmember Freeman made a motion. Why don't you go ahead and explain the motion that we would be voting on since it's the second?
Is this the first?
No, Councilmember Smith made the first motion.
I don't know, he was giving directives to staff, not motions.
Councilmember Smith had made one...
There's only one motion.
Mayor, I can...
Councilmember Smith had made a motion, then Councilmember Freeman had made a motion.
Okay, then clarify, what was Councilman Smith's motion?
Councilmember Smith wanted to dwell a little bit more on the issue that he thinks is, is before the council. I believe, Councilmember Freeman, that you addressed Councilmember Smith's motion in your motion.
Yes.
And his motion, Councilmember Gray, is that it's a motion by Freeman to continue this particular item to explore the comments of both Councilmember Smith and Councilmember Ware.
Doing that through spending money with, or are we doing that through our own staff?
No, I believe the city manager made it pretty clear that our own staff was doing it and was going to bring back a more direct approach.
Okay, that's what was confusing me. Thank you.
Okay. So now, with no other requests to speak, we're going to vote on Councilmember Freeman's motion. You have a motion? Please cash your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Arias absent.
Thank you. And now, next item, please.
Closed session, item 4A, public employee performance evaluation, city manager.
We are adjourned to closed session.
Adjourned to closed session, sorry.
Adjourned to closed session, we're for you. Reconvening the 3:30 city council meeting, Madam City Attorney.
Yes, Mayor, there was only one item on closed session this evening, item 4A, and there is no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, the 3:30 meeting stands adjourned at 5:24. And we will be ready to start the next one.